One.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number four is our proclamation for the United Way of Denton. Whereas, United Way of Denton County mobilizes communities like the city of Oak Point to action so all can thrive. And whereas, by working together with donors, supporters, and collaborators across Denton County, United Way of Denton County creates opportunities to expand education, promote economic mobility, improve health and mental health, and provide basic needs for over fifty-three thousand county residents annually. Whereas, United Way of Denton County leads the effort with a network of nonprofits, governments, businesses, and donors to respond to our neighbors' immediate needs and seek out better solutions for larger community-wide issues. Now therefore, Idina Meek declares September twenty twenty-four Live United Month and proudly joins United Way of Denton County in calling on all residents of the city of Oak Point to give to one, to impact many, as we take action to live united for a better Denton County for all. If you'd like, you can come up right please. We're so happy to have you here at Oak Point. Thank you so much for coming. We're so proud of all the work you do. Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you.
To all the work. Thank you so much. Chief, can I just come in?
I'm not going to speak too long about this. We had somebody that was a big first responder supporter. My only dealings with this person was through her care and her kindness towards our department. She was a real big houseguy on Thanksgiving and the luncheons. But from what I understand, she was a lot more. So in honor, in honor of her memory, Fire and Police Department decided to make this plaque for her, on her memory of her. I'm going to pass it over to Deena for a little bit more information.
Thank you, Chief, for being here. Kristen was an exceptional person. She loved her family, her neighbors, her friends, and she was just a joyful giver. She was very active with the ladies of Oak Point and for ten-plus years, every year when we do our Thanksgiving feast for DPS, she was a major contributor, wanted to help serve. She was a great cook, and she really enjoyed bringing things to DPS because she admired them so much. Thank you.
This time, I'm going to call Officer Campbell. Officer Campbell. Officer Campbell started with us twenty nineteen. Then he went on hiatus for a little bit, and he came back to us. He says, this is such a wonderful place. You want to come back with me. But he does come with experience, comes with the experience as a jailer and a police officer from the city of Oak Point, and then also previous experience with us here in Oak Point. So we're glad to have him back. I also want to call Chief Deputy Granado. She's going to be the one that's going to be pinning Officer Campbell. Chief Deputy Granado is from the Garland Marshals Office, and she also comes with forty-five years of law enforcement experience. So she's going to help us out with pinning Officer Campbell after the sworn.
Oh, yeah.
After his sworn.
Stay here.
I am the publicist called Campbell. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office patrol officer in the city of Oak Point, Denton County, and the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state. So let me go.
Yeah.
Sorry, I also forgot. Chief Deputy Granado is his grandmother.
Okay. Thank you all for coming.
Happy to have you here.
Thank you all. Agenda item seven is items of community interest. John.
We have our newsletter that should be coming out first week of September. And then October fifth will be our annual garage sale. October twelfth, the annual cleanup, orbiting up the document shredding, and the household hazardous waste pickup. October twenty-fifth, the police department is going to be putting on their shadowy school capoeira. November ninth, we will have veterans appreciation.
Thank you. Agenda item.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to say, mark me down as tardy in the afternoon. And also, I have to bring one bottle in there.
Agenda item number eight, public input. I have two requests. One is Dina Miller.
Hello, Dina Miller, four oh two, question what fellow drive. Two short things. My husband had published a crystal. He wanted me to come and ask, can we please have the stop sign put back at Lartendale and Norman Breaker, especially since there's a curb cut now put in on the other side of the road. So that would make that a four-way. When the traffic there gets a little crazy, and I'm sure you all know. And then I had put, it's either opposition or any, or support for twelve. And it's not really opposition or support for that specific item. It's that I just want to put in people's minds, I want to draw a few little elements from parts of Chris Go today. There are so many empty, brand-new retail boxes. And I want us to be careful. We've got four corners that we committed to being our retail commercial area. And now we're talking about a corner. All the town's seventy. And now they're talking about a corner down the corner. Just want us to not holler around and say, well, I see little elements where they said, big, open, empty, brand-new boxes. So I didn't want any opposition. Means just don't stick ahead.
Thank you for your comments. Jack Brown.
Thank you. I am Jack Brown, six fifteen Woodbridge Drive. At the risk of sounding like broken record, I'd like to comment on the commercial corridor discussions and presentations that were made about a week ago, which I miss. I'm seeing that the consulting firm half is still like weeds that won't go away from our front yards, pushing for condominiums, townhomes, second-floor residential's above multi-use commercial, and so forth. I just received my notice of drought watering restrictions that I'm sure everyone else got too, cutting us back to once a week. That is, even before we get three or four thousand new residents from the Bloomfield and Wildridge developments of about a thousand new homes, thirty-four thousand additional people, nearly doubling our current population. And it's after spring rains that I think sets some records for amount and volume of water that filled our reservoirs to the bank full. Given those circumstances, I do not know how we can support high-density development anywhere west of seven twenty. And so I implore the members of the council, members of the economic development commission and planning zone to hold a line at a minimum of one acre with single-family detached homes exclusively on the west side of seven twenty. I think anything more dense than that is out of character for the town, for the community. And I dare say, I don't think you would find any residents who would speak in favor of condos, townhomes, or second-floor vertical housing in or in those areas. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number nine, presentation and discussion of the following reports. Financial report for July twenty twenty-four. Any questions, council? Municipal report for July twenty twenty-four. Any questions? The permits report for July twenty twenty-four. Permits are still down. Public safety DPS report for July twenty twenty-four. Chief, do you have any comments?
No, we got, we got three officers training right now. So we're one hundred and fifty-four staff.
Congratulations. I noticed that service calls are up to nine hundred and sixteen for last month. That's quite a bit.
July is usually a previous month for us, especially for July. We've almost got one hundred more calls on the fourth of July.
Thank you for working hard to keep this all safe. Chief Roach, do you have anything you'd like to comment on?
Yes, ma'am. So we provided you with a single page printout there as a timeline for the annual implementation that's broken down about a month. You'll receive the one drive link as well. That one drive link, you haven't updated yet, but the new part of this is updated periodically. A lot of updates to this one. I'll provide it to you each month or during the month in email. But the other one will represent that update pretty much live. I think I explained it all in there. If you have a question, please contact me. It'll show a four-week period. Change that week number. It'll show that week you look at, and that first week with additional period. And then it should highlight the actual day that it is as well in term. So those are pretty much the tasks we've determined so far, and we're at that timeline.
Thank you. It's exciting time, isn't it?
Yes.
I think our residents will be pleased to have our home. The fire report for July twenty twenty-four.
Question for Chief. I noticed on your reports that probably Chief number one. The vacation calls have gone up. I'm sure it's a lot because it's summer. And I think it's a great service for the citizens unless it interferes with other work that the police need to get done. So I would expect you to let us know if we ever get to that in the morning, where we might have to reconsider that offer.
I think right now we're not too busy to do, to do it as a service. But usually, if y'all officers are on a call and they can't get to that vacation watch, then we'll pass it on to the next shift. So eventually, within a point of our period of vacation, we'll just check. But I agree, it's a one, but we can really value it definitely.
Our report for July twenty twenty-four. Chief Roach, do you have any additional comments?
No, I'm pretty much did it in addition to that. Other than that call, we're standard issue. We'll, I'm sure, run about that, to the, set ourselves on angle on that.
Agenda item ten, report from council liaison A. Update on the park August meeting. Scott?
Well, I wasn't there, but I got a report from Candy on what happened. And the pick-up off-court bit is out. And I guess it's, comes up, will be opened in September sometime. And the board is working on master plan for the ramp. I believe public DPS installs some cameras down there for security. And the damaged kayak launch was replaced by the manufacturer. But the board decided to wait a while, get reassembled until perhaps you get the new dock in the covered, around the bay area. So it won't get torn up again. That's all.
Thank you. B, update the Economic Development Corporation August meeting. Rick?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So the August EDS meeting was primarily a joint workshop between the city council, the EDC, and the P and Z, as Jack alluded to, to discuss HAF's most recent work on part one of the commercial corridor overlay zoning strategy. It was a large overview and from the comments from most of the people that were in attendance, they felt that it was a big step, that there was, I think, some kind of frustration leading up to this meeting about the progress that was being made. And most of the people who commented were impressed with the progress that was made with what was presented at the meeting. There is a sixty-ish page document that was provided and is available through City Staff if anybody wants to request it. And the only other comment I would make, Jack, I think your comments were loud and clear from many of the people in attendance, including many people on the boards and the council, and were star in agreement with your sentiment. And I technically felt a lot of ears perked up when we saw some of the sort of rough draft presentation of what we wanted to do for transition from the very western part toward the commercial corridor. So still a lot of work to be done.
Thank you, Mayor. These are our decent agenda. Agenda item eleven, consider an act upon the minutes for the July third, seventeenth, and thirty-first, twenty twenty-four city council meetings. Number twelve, consider an act to approve a site plan for a retail center at the corner of Farber Market, seven twenty, and McCormick Road. Thirteen, consider an act to approve an inter-local cooperation agreement with Denton County for property assessments and collection between Denton County and Oak Point seven twenty, public improvement district, improvement area number one. And fourteen, consider an act to approve an inter-local cooperation, cooperation agreement with Denton County for the rehabilitation of McCormick Road between Yacht Club and FM seven twenty. Council, do you wish to accept and approve the consent agenda as is, or do you wish to have an item pulled for further discussion?
Mayor, I wish to pull item twelve, please.
My motion to approve items eleven, thirteen, and fourteen is never.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lusk and a second by Councilmember Horatio to approve eleven, thirteen, and fourteen. Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number twelve. Mr. Hookers counting.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is a request for approval of a site plan for a new retail facility on the north side of McCormick and the back half of point seven twenty. The front edge is now pretty much clean. And this is that piece of property that is just south of the Goddard School and just west of the existing retail center. Generally, when I bring something, a site plan into you, we also have a landscape plan and facade treatments of what the building's going to look like. In this case, they wanted to make sure that, they being the act, they wanted to make sure that they got the site plan correct with parking, driveways, emergency services, drainage, and so on. And that's why this is here. If you approve this subsequent to this meeting, they will also be required to submit detailed development plans, pre-step of the process. If you look at that, at that site plan, there's a big rectangular area that's got parking around it. That is just a potential building overhaul. And what I did is I made the assumption that that building was used to be all retail. And I kept there the amount of parking that's going to be required in there. There actually had more parking than was required in one of them. So I think statute recommendation was approval. And again, from the planning and zoning commission would recommend that's not approved.
So I have several questions. First, are we free to approve or disapprove this, or is this a ministerial?
No, this is something that your office, that we would disapprove.
Okay. Have you seen the draft proposal from HAF on the most current draft proposal for the zoning regulations and the overlay district that they presented last week and published? Have we considered the direction that we're trying to go with that plan? And I realize that we only can deal with what's on the books today. But have we considered where we're trying to go and try to incorporate of that direction into giving the owners of this property direction on what we would like to see them be doing with this property?
No.
Is this a single building, or is this going to be subdivided into multiple retail spaces?
My understanding is that they're going to have one building that can be up to twelve thousand square feet. That can be divided into four or five retail outlets. So they have not submitted a design for that yet, otherwise you'd have.
This says fifteen thousand.
That's the envelope. So there's no, that is speaking with Mr. Carter and some other things.
Is there any reason why, I understand they want to get this in front of us and get some approval and move it forward, but is there any reason why we should be going forward with this without getting the rest of the story, the landscaping plan and everything else?
My recommendation is that you approve this request because it is consistent with our zoning and it's currently consistent with our comprehensive plan without the benefit of an overlay to the corridor. And to that extent, I haven't tried to push anybody in that direction that you haven't. And I find it is not, not good planning if I tell somebody that I want to do something that you haven't said yes to. And so in this case, this complies with our zoning, with plan development district requirements that is there, and with the comprehensive plan as it's been adopted to this point. And with that, I still recommend the planning zoning commission recommend it.
So will we be able to determine that later on the next round, how this can look, or?
Yes.
So we can still take into consideration our corridor and our plan at the next.
Character plan, yes. Exactly. That was one of the things I was kind of surprised that they didn't submit because if they had already figured out what they wanted, maybe they would have submitted that. In this case, what they designed is just an envelope within which they can put buildings. And if we adopt a regulation that says that it needs to look like X, and it looks like Y, they're going to need to bring it back to X. And you are going to, P and Z is going to have an opportunity to vet that, and you're going to have an opportunity to consider that when it gets to you. And I have not heard anything from them about when they're ready to submit or detail development of that.
This doesn't matter at this level.
Yes, sir. I think that until you have adopted the ordinance or a resolution or a policy, I mean, if you were to tell me, this is what you want me to do, I'm going to do that. But you haven't.
So let me, I'll make sure I got a second. Right now, we're asking for a time envelope, no details.
Correct.
In the meantime, we're working on a character, what's it called? Character code set system, whatever. Does it matter which one of those comes, the file design versus character code? What is this, pest line first?
Yeah, this also has to do with pest products. Yeah.
Definitely pest line first.
Right. Under the state law, the developer, landowner vests what they apply for the first time. It is way that statute rules. So when they first submit an application, they vest with the rules in place at that time. And so we can change the rules, change the ordinances, but it's not going to apply to somebody who has already applied previously. It would apply to future applicants. So a site plan that meets our requirements, we have to approve it. Kind of like Platts, we have to prove it. We can change our requirements, but it's only going to apply to future people.
So the first emission is this one?
Yeah, they weren't invested. And so, yeah, I mean, we can adopt new regulations, but it's going to apply to future applicants.
Thank you.
If we approve. Well, in my view, the site plan that meets our requirements, we have to.
Then you're saying this is a ministerial?
Correct.
If it's not, not ministerial.
It's a ministerial duty to approve a site plan that meets our requirements. As compared to legislation, which allows you a lot of discretion.
What were the factors that called for approval, condition approval, right? What were the factors? All conditions, that's what I'm saying.
Well, there's been some amendments. I mean, I would say four years ago, three years ago, site plans fell within the same framework as Platts, where you approve, conditionally approve, disapprove. Last session, Platts, excuse me, site plans got removed from that statute. So really, it's just Platts where you approve, conditionally approve, or disapprove. Under the statute, it was House Bill thirty-six ninety-nine, and that made that change last session. So site plans, two years ago were similar to Platts. Today, they're a little different.
I understand that. More basically, staff representatives approve upon conditions. Are those conditions still in there, or have they fixed?
Those conditions are still in there.
Lot four is still?
I have not received a new plan, but it'll have to show up the next time you see it as lot four. Because right now, it shows that it's part of lot three and lot four. It's just lot four because it was required to do the lot four on this property. I mean, the Goddard School paid for it.
I'm still unclear on what you led off with. This is a site plan. And normally, when you get a site plan, it's complete with landscape and elevations and facade and everything else, and that they're just trying to push this through the way it is so they can have some sort of heads up or something. Is there any reason why we can't require them to comply with what we would normally see?
They have to sit here and. Well, when they submitted their application, that's when they vested with the rights, with the rules in place at the time. So it's not today that they vest. They vested when we did the application.
Okay. So again, we can't be prepared in that space or parking where it would make all of us in Oak Point happy and not have just another strip center. I get all that. all of us in Oakmont happy and not have just another strip center. I get all that because of where we're at with our laws. But why are we being, why are you recommending that we approve this without what you would normally see? Escapes and elevations and facade and everything else?
I can answer that. Our other, the other elements that I normally present here are not required at submit. They can come along at any time. Detailed development plans for each element will be required. So if they decided that they want, just to bring us the facade and elevations, that's one step. You can see it again. But before they ever got to get a building permit, they'd have to have the landscaping and anything else. One of the things that's, that's kind of underlying, not that they'll freely all consider, but the storm brewing between Goddard and this property. Our city engineer is working on making sure that that is resolved. It's not, it's not a question they need to deal with, but it is one of the things that we're resolving. And I think that that's one of the reasons why they wanted to get their site plan approved, so they could finish up those easements that need to be done to convey the Goddard water down through the construction, so they get the bottom layer.
So ultimately, just drawing out a site plan, it could be anything. Doesn't really matter.
Inside that rectangle, it can be anything that's allowed in the code, and it, and the parking that's there is going to be detailed, it weighs their dog. So if they, if they try to, if they try to design something that requires more parking instead of in the envelope where the building would be, they can't add any parking because they've maxed the parking out on this site. Now, what I did was I calculated as though they were going to have a twelve thousand square foot retail slash restaurant in Goddard. They had sufficient parking plus something. If they went into all personal services, for instance, the parking parks go up. So there are some regular requirements, trace, you're going to need to deal with, but you're not going to get to deal with it today because those other elements that I usually bring to you, they're not required to come at the same time. They are required, it's not at the same time.
Going back to the old parking sign, it's always a, that's not, not fancy, everyone fifty, mirrors stick out. What's the, what's the width on these parking spots? Are they going to be standard?
Nine by, nine by twenty.
Nine. That's the minimum? What's the minimum?
Here, here we are. It's nine. Now, point. A lot of other jurisdictions allowed to go to eight and a half.
So they're at the minimum, aren't they, for the parking?
Yes, sir.
So are most recent developments the size of those parking spaces either?
What is the parking out here? We all, we talked about this when we stopped at Steven, the ten or nine and a half or what?
I think we, we stopped them at ten, a discretion.
And, and they're much nicer than parking.
Right. That's what I'm telling you, that's what I got a standard, we're all on.
But, but comes with the less, if you wanted to have a requirement that was wider than what you have, you need to change the rules.
Because you can't go any smaller because of the.
That's right. This is the minimum, minimum width by twenty feet. Other jurisdictions, solid here. You divide it with eight by seventeen, seven and a half by sixteen.
So I don't have my lady, because I went to the baseball game, you hear it right here, one?
We did hear that.
Long run, long run, we showed, the bottom showed parking, or longer on one side, shorter on the other side, right?
They show that, but, but that's just a site plan.
Okay, but, but parking, parking along with that, far right?
That minimum depth on the far right side on that picture is twenty.
Any other questions from Mr. Trump?
Yes. Anybody, but, but council, very clear.
I'll try to be. I just want to be clear here on the property, the PDs, because this is planned development eighteen. And then the applications, oh, I guess this is PD eighteen, and then this PD CC, because it's C. And this is PD CC is for ten point two eight six acres. Excuse me, discuss about ten point two six acres right here. But then this application goes with nine by five acres or something. Could you insert those in?
Yes, sir. So the geography for that plan development district is a little over ten acres. And that includes a portion of the property that is now the, what is that, that Montessor School at the north end?
Goddard.
Not Goddard, north of that.
Oh, PMA, Pinnacle Montessor.
Pinnacle Montessor. So that's two acres or two point two acres of the, of the ten plus. And then you've got all the things that are on the right-hand side, running on seven twenty, which would be lot one at the corner, lot two, which is the right.
Maybe.
Okay. Then going to the west, you've got the drive and the access to the Montessor School up. Then you got Goddard, which is dangerously close to the end of. And then you've got this last track. And each one of those are lots inside, there are five lots inside of plan development district for eighteen. And so that plan development district, when it starts out, it says, this is a plan development district for following these, etc. Except as shown here, the rules in our commercial, uh, community commercial, zoning district apply. And so that's why I stuck that in there so that, so that the P and Z and the council would understand that it's not just what's said on that PD, which I attached to the report, but you have to refer back to our other regulations, which talk about our width and height and parking requirements and all the other things that, that we deal with on a regular basis when you finally approve something like this.
So that's PD eighteen and then PD CC that.
That's, CC is inside eighteen. It's part of eighteen. It's just, but when you read eighteen by itself, it says the uses and other standards allowed in the CC district. And so you don't find that in the PD document. You have to go to the CC in our zoning ordinance to understand what that really requires. I don't know where they need to go, so.
So then the next question is, we, this is site plan.
I'm glad I didn't call mine, but I can tell her I was going to get after it.
So what, what streets am I looking at here?
McCormick on the bottom. That north-south street is the main driveway that provides access to Goddard, to the Montessor School at the far north end, to this, to the vacant block that is between the retail center that comes on seven twenty and the Montessor School.
And so this site plan, if we accept that, it necessarily means that this other entry would be the other entry that's on the left side here?
Yes. And that's, that was, that was part of a flat that was approved some time ago. In addition, as a result of this, that section of the roadway in McCormick that has not been completed on the north side is going to be completed at least to the western property line. And I think that zoning may have money. And murder, but to the, to the, to the west side. There's a, there's a lane of traffic that, McCormick requires four lanes and a hundred feet. They got it to dedicate the right of way, and they said when they went above fifty percent development, this one's going to push you over fifty percent. Then they're going to finish up that section of McCormick between seven twenty and their property line. There'll be bollards at the end until we get ready to continue on with McCormick, but at least we got that part finished.
Good. I like this.
Yes.
Who's going to do that?
It's up to the developer, we'll, we'll review and approve.
So, I mean, I, I, I understand this ministerial, which, I just have serious concerns about everything that's being built in this spot and all the traffic that's already there, that's going to be there. How far down then, what's the distance between these two entrances? Okay, to the traffic that's. And, and just see additional traffic layers or whatever.
I can, I can tell you that there's going to be a lot of traffic interface here. If you look at the south, just on the south end of that, right there, that's the driveway into the seven eleven parking lot. And then this one will be the drive, there'll be a driveway across from this on, on Von's property, or, yeah, on Von's property, that's down here, which I've got plans in for that as well. So there's going to be, there's going to be an interface there, but I believe that we're going to be able to deal with the traffic effectively. We do have a stoplight at seven twenty, which helps. Truck, truck has a way of working itself out.
And I know it's not hard, this particular item, if you can mention, if you know that property that's going to be across, do you know what it is?
The PD on the south side, the Von Miller piece property, it's about the same size of geography, about ten and a half acres. And it's now got the front all developed, and we've got things in the back that are, you're going to see in the interview. When I say the back, the west side. And they're about the same size, north and south of McCormick there.
So will it do McCormick sooner rather than later? Would, would it wait till that, click the development intro, or work on the apartment or pick the apartment?
When they, when they go over fifty percent development on this track, they're obligated to put that section of McCormick in adjacent to their property. Now, the rest of it.
What's the timing of that, what's that?
Next year.
Do you do the whole development? Is it okay now we're in?
No, no. The, the reason that we have with them is that once they go over the fifty-one percent development, then they're going to finish that section of McCormick between seven twenty and their property line.
We have road improvements later in the agenda. Stephen, I'll help as well.
Lawyer motion, I'm going to go into your group. Development stock plan, okay, and lot four, seven twenty division, division of following conditions, we need to label it lot four.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Council member Luss and a second by Council member Bastid. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay.
Nay.
Let's do a roll call, please. Council, Council member Luss.
Aye.
Council member Bastid.
Aye.
Mayor Protown Dufford.
Aye.
Council member Horatio.
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Protown Kaluki.
Nay.
Council member Wyler.
Nay.
Council member Mary. Yes. Aye.
That was dangerous, it goes to a high vote, but that will make. Now, I want to tell you all, we had a discussion at the P and Z about this. And normally I don't bring things that I, in this case, I look at the code, they're a pair, pair. And they do not require that I bring it all at once. It said that I need to bring it, and they apply. Here it is. One other thing, I appreciate your time. You mainly called it, I had a cancel action there.
Why, just answer.
And I am, except for I, I take a shot every six months. It is a testosterone inhibitor bill. I have it, and it lasts six months. And what happens while I have this, and I'm going to have my last one next month, is, and you didn't see it, I don't think, but you may have. While I was standing here, I was covered in sweat, top to bottom, because it feeds me hot waves. And, and my wife says, no, you can't tell people that kind of, they're going to sue you, what are you saying? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Jeanne, we, we had a vote to pull agenda item twelve, but I don't think we had a vote to approve consent agenda three.
Yeah, we approved eleven thirteen fourteen.
We're moving on to the regular agenda. Fifteen. Your comments on the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Stephen.
Deputy Mayor and Council, I'll do a quick overview of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget that we reviewed today. So fiscal, fiscal year twenty-five, some of the items that we put in the budget that we're working toward was market adjustments and PD salaries. We had some market adjustments and fire salaries, market adjustments and admin and public works. We funded three new, fully funded three new positions in police department with intent to fill five. We fully funded two positions in fire department two with the intention to fill three. We funded a new assistance, three new positions in, in admin and assistant city manager, a city planner, an account payable position. To fund, to office those positions, we funded a portable office building placed on the property. Our phone system, we've budgeted to replace our phone system this year. Police department, they were looking for some handheld radars. We replaced eighteen new tactical rifles. And then we had a, a one-ton truck for public works that they asked for. Freemans, bunker gear, uniforms, computer. Equipment. We added an additional fifty thousand to what we had budgeted already for eighty thousand for our, oops, for our comp plan update. Back that up. We have medical insurance increased. We had, we budgeted only for ten, ten thousand, but it actually went up twelve and a half percent on us this year. We added a hundred and fifty to our equipment replacement. We had to add additional, what we weren't prepared for, it's not a big deal, but for our preventative maintenance, one of our generators, we had to add five hundred dollars fees. We left that dump truck we've been talking about, multiple years in the budget, and we had our contribution to our CIP. We brought one point three million, and then we had salary adjustments across the board for non-sworn positions at five percent.
I've got to answer my question. Where do you know the old rockers?
The wall chain off, or the cell off again.
Thank you.
Stephen, I have a question too that I forgot to ask. At a previous meeting, we, we budgeted for a planner. Do you have a general plan or intent on how you're going to phase in that planner with our existing process?
I, I, I kind of imagine that planner will do a lot of the work that I'm doing in planning right now. So it, it'll pick up a lot of, I'll, I'll do a preliminary review and submit what I find to Michael. Michael typically does a final review on, on items. I bounce a lot of questions to Michael. People that come in here and ask for information, I, I submit them to Michael. Sometimes if I have time, I'll answer the questions. But lately, I haven't had a lot of time, so I've been pushing a lot of them to Michael. But it, it'll pick up a lot of the things that I've been handling myself.
This is not necessarily a plan to replace our contract.
No, we're not replacing Michael. This is be kind of a maybe someone with a couple of years of experience in the planning department, came in as an entry level planner. I was labeling a planner too, that's kind of what I'm looking at, somebody that's maybe looking to step up a position. You know, maybe, you know, they, they learn from Michael, and when Michael decides Michael's retiring for good, then maybe they fall into Michael's position.
Do you have timing for that, such a timing?
Michael already went. He's going to ask you when he was retiring.
No, no, retiring for when you're going to, when you're going to try and bring somebody on.
Uh, yeah, so as, as early as we can get, get the building in place and get, get office space hooked up or set up, we'll start advertising prior to that and bring them in, so. And once we get pretty well established, we'll probably start making the order for the portable building out back, and hopefully that we have it ready to go by early October.
Probably two, one or two.
Right. Exactly.
If I can interject, it'll take a lot off staff if we had a planner on staff, because we get a lot of phone calls. I get a lot of phone calls from relatives. I don't have the understanding to talk to them about some of the questions they have. Stephen doesn't have the time to do all of that, and so then we have to have them call Michael. And as you know, Michael works with different teams. So if we have someone here and somebody comes into the office, or they call them, that person can take it.
Makes, makes great sense in that support, but thank you.
So looking at some of our property taxable value histories, back in two thousand seventeen, we were three hundred. back in two thousand seventeen, we were three hundred thirty-nine million. Uh, this year we, we pushed over to the billion dollar value. So our, our property values were one billion, three million, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars is what was certified. Uh, that was a ten point nine three percent increase over fiscal year twenty-four. I, I came here in eighteen, first budget was nineteen, our first budget was four hundred fifty-six thousand, we more than, four hundred fifty-six million, we more than doubled in value. In, well, over five years. It's a lot of growth, so. Uh, there's that sheet I tell you that's too small that we work, we work off of, but I put it in there anyway, it's in your package, if you want to look at it a little closer. Um, but, uh, that kind of gives you the breakdown and I'll, I'll kind of go through that on the bigger sheets here. Um, so general fund revenues. Property tax is, is mostly our, our biggest one. Um, property tax, um, was budgeted four million, two hundred twenty mil, uh, four million, two hundred twenty thousand, uh, which is a delta of about thirteen point four percent increase and it's forty-three per, forty-three percent of our revenue. I don't want to go down and read each one of these, but, uh, as we go down through, those are our bigger ones. Uh, that, uh, twelve percent falls in with public safety contracts with your SROs, crosshopper ranch, et cetera. And then twelve percent is our pit fair share, that's, uh, out to, uh, Shan Prairie and, uh, Wildridge. Uh, that's their fair share of the public safety department's budget. Altogether, that, that puts the budget at nine million, seven hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars. Or about a nineteen point three percent increase, uh, over last fiscal year in revenue. Looking at that general fund budget, that nine point seven million, you can see that, uh, the biggest chunk obviously in the graph, uh, is your forty-three percent is your, your property tax. Uh, again, your next biggest, uh, generators are your, your, your contracts and your, your, your pit fair shares. Um, and then, you know, it just kind of falls in from there, you get much smaller ones, your sales taxes, seven percent, I believe, or actually six percent. Franchise fees, seven percent, et cetera. Looking at general fund expenditures, um, so the admin budget was one point seven million. Uh, that was a thirty-six point nine percent increase. Uh, that was mostly due to adding three positions in, in this year's budget for admin. Uh, as a percent of overall, um, budget, that was seventeen point six percent. Public safety, as you can see, we, we, we split them up this year. Instead of having this DPS, we had police and fire. So what I did was combined the two numbers and compared them to DPS single budget last year. And that was a twenty-three percent increase over last fiscal year's budget. Uh, as a percentage of the budget, police department or public safety fire department is twenty-three percent, police department's about thirty-three percent. Public works is about five percent of the budget and non-departmental is about six percent of the overall budget. Uh, that gave us, uh, revenues of over expenditures of about four hundred and thirty, four hundred thirty-four thousand. Uh, so when we look at our, our fair share transferring in from our PIDs of about one point one four million. And then we transferred out one million, three hundred fifty thousand to, uh, CIP for road improvements. Uh, then we transfer out a hundred and fifty thousand for equipment, uh, out to equipment reserves. Uh, then we transferred another fifty thousand out to building renovation funds. And then we transferred out another, uh, twenty-five thousand to building reserves. Uh, so that gave us an, uh, a negative four hundred and thirty-three thousand. So our total, our revenues over expenditures minus our transfers gave us a net change in fund balance of three hundred twenty-two dollars. We can get it to zero going, I could find three hundred twenty-two dollars, it's been somewhere, so.
We load the tax rate.
Yeah, we can take it off the tax rate. Three hundred twenty-two dollars. So then looking at the general fund expenditures in a pie chart, you can see obviously, uh, you know, your public safety, police and fire, your big ones, and then admin. And then, uh, your CIP at one point three million. And then the, the smaller departments, uh, public works only has three employees, so that's four percent. And, uh, non-departmental is six percent. So kind of looking at that, trying to condense that summary from that bigger sheet that was really convoluted and hard to see on there. So we looked at overall revenue, including the PID transfers in, we had nine million, seven hundred nineteen thousand. Um, then we had total expenditures of eight million, one hundred forty-three. That gave us revenues over expenditures of one point five million. And we transferred out one point five seven five million, which gave us that net change in fund balance of three hundred twenty-two dollars. Then our estimated fund balance, uh, ending, uh, this year is five point four million. We looked at twenty-five percent of reserves of expenditures, that gave us two million, thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, that's our, our reserve funds. Uh, and then that gave us a fund balance in excess, uh, of reserves of three point three million, almost three point four million dollars. And there you go, proposed fiscal year twenty-five budget, nine point seven one nine, seven fifty-nine. Answer any questions if you have any.
Council, any questions for Stephen? If not, I'll open the public hearing at six fifty-eight. Does anyone wish to speak about the budget? If not, it's closed at six fifty-eight PM. Agenda item under sixteen, consider an act to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for professional audit services with Bell and Park. Stephen?
Caught up here, you guys. So we went out for, uh, RFP, we, we, we published a request for qualifications for auditing services. Uh, in the Denton Record Chronicle back in June, uh, we received, uh, two RFQs back, uh, one RFQ, uh, uh, when we scored them, uh, scored, outscored the other one, that was, uh, um, um, is it Park and Bill or Villan Park? Uh, Villan Park. Uh, they scored the highs and, uh, we contacted some of the references and received good responses. And therefore staff is recommending that, uh, auditing services moving forward for next fiscal year and then three subsequent fiscal years based on satisfactory performance. So council authorized staff to sign a proposal for auditing services with Bell and Park.
Is there a motion?
A question, this presumably isn't different on any version than you've used in the past.
It is, yes. Have you seen the audit yet this year?
I haven't asked my question, has it been satisfactory?
Pretty much, yes.
And compared to the previous year, was this, this was a new firm?
We've had it two, two years.
Right.
Not good. Is there a motion?
We have a motion to authorize city manager to execute an agreement with the professional audit services with Bell and Park DC.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Bastid and a second by Councilmember Wyler. Nay on this session, don't ask your questions.
Since you've been here, is this our third audit, are you thinking of coming up?
This is, uh, this would be our, our third. We had, uh, I can't remember their names.
Lot Flev.
Yeah, Lot Flev when it first came, we went out to bid with the current firm. Uh, and I think this is their third audit with us. The first year we had them, they were fine, the last two years we got trouble getting an audit from them, so, uh, we went back out to bid.
Any other questions? If not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passed unanimously. Agenda item seventeen, consider an act on ordinance repealing and replacing chapter eight, article eight, point zero two of the Oak Point Code of Ordinances dealing with outdoor burning. Chief Roach?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, this is just for requests we consider not on the bill, that, that's rated point two. Um, it's, it's intertwined with some other things that had ordinance with this particular relationship, it's a burning portion, we've had a lot of residents who can't go back and forth, but it should be allowed and shouldn't be allowed. My opinion, it's actually a great benefit for a lot of citizens, they're in Oak Point, they've been that way for a long time. I don't necessarily see it as something we need to restrict, not allow at all. Um, it would be, in my opinion, no different than having it banned and people still deciding to do this out of the same safety concerns. At least this way we put some rules in place that hopefully guide them better if they're going to do that type of activity, to improve the safety to the community. Um, we simply added some clarification and some definitions and quite a few additional guidelines. We've looked through several other cities. Um, it's a real broad stroke, some cities allow, some don't, some have few guidelines, some have a lot. Uh, so we kind of pulled a little bit from everything, tried to figure out what we kind of feel is the concerns we have throughout it. Um, along with that was just adding the provisions or the clarifying and fixing some of the penalty portions. Some of that ordinance before had a five hundred dollar limit on penalties. That's for some of the other portions in that ordinance, code allows up to two thousand for violations of the fire code section. I think that's pretty much it.
Well, Chief, I read it thoroughly and I don't like the words written in this document, so, thank you.
Yeah, did a great job.
Thank you for your, due to your revelations.
So this, our current city code allows for two thousand dollar violations?
Under the park, yes, for those types of violations, we're going to mark the violation.
And that's not a change that's?
That clarified that in this related to that particular type of activities, some of the others, like the noise portion. Um, I want to say it was something else in there, I have to look back at the other portions of that, that particular article where aren't necessarily that large of an issue, again, noise. Um, two thousand dollars is kind of every fine for being a little bit loud. So that's, those are still at the five hundred dollar range.
So is it a change or is it?
Yes, it's a change, because it didn't clarify that. I would say it is a change because it just had the five hundred dollars in there before, or there was a provision at the beginning of the ordinance.
Yeah, there, there's a section, uh, currently, uh, I think it's eight point zero two, point zero zero two that lays out a penalty for all, uh, all offenses in that subchapter at five hundred dollars. Well, fire violations can be up to two thousand. So part of this ordinance rewrite, we removed that penalty provision. In chapter one of the Code of Ordinances lays out the general penalty provision for, you know, consistent with state law. So we just pulled out that penalty provision in that chapter. Uh, because fire code, you can have up to, again, two thousand, noise would be five hundred. So it, it's really a cleanup, i- if I'm answering the, the question.
Yes, I just wanted to be sure, in chapter one, it's two thousand.
Yeah, in chapter one, it's, it's two thousand, noise would be five hundred, but, uh, yeah, we, we just removed some conflicting penalty provisions.
I also have a question, Jeff, in, uh, section, a rewrite of the act consistent with, um, the original. Uh, section eight, point oh two, point oh one, definition C, nuisance. Um, and as I read this, uh, it, it talks about, um, that offensive consensus or is threatened to become detrimental, it's hereby declared a nuisance and the following specific acts, conditions and things are among others in each of them, each and all of them, hereby declared to be nuisances against all general welfare and the same, uh, are hereby prohibited and made unlawful. I'm trying to understand what the following specific acts refers to, because I don't really see that in these ordinance.
Well, this is the first line kind of covered, whatever is dangerous to human life without, or whatever renders.
Well, I understand that, but it, it talks about following specific acts, conditions and things. And I'm trying to find where those follow. I mean, it was in the original one, it was just brought over.
Yes, this is, all these definitions are, are new definitions, A through G. Um, and I guess maybe that it is hereby declared to be a nuisance. And basically, if, if we were to take up, and the following specific acts, conditions and things are among others in each and all of them, take out that phrase right there, that might clean up your, your, your issue.
Yeah, I think so. Um, unless there's something that refers to following, but I don't see.
Yeah. I see what you're saying.
Yeah. Declared to be a nuisance are hereby, I mean, just.
Declared to be nuisance.
And hereby declared to be a nuisance and against the general welfare and the same are hereby prohibited and made unlawful. Um, I guess given some, I guess the earlier version, that language should have been taken out.
So you're going to say, uh, oh, you have hereby declared to be a nuisance and then a comma.
And then, and against the general welfare. And then just say, and against the general welfare and the same are hereby prohibited and made unlawful.
Yes. So we're removing from and to.
Declared to be nuisances.
To then.
And to. Okay, so that, that was from the original text.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was brought over completely.
Yeah, this was from eight point zero two, point zero zero one.
It makes, it didn't make sense.
That, that language. Okay. And, and then. And so what, yeah, what, what we did, we tried to add several definitions into that section. So i- i- if you're inclined to approve, I mean, we'll be breaking back next meeting, plan, plan that up, or if you want to approve, revise, get, you can do that.
So I'll make a motion to approve, revise.
Second.
Yeah, and.
We have a motion by Councilmember Wyler and a second by Councilmember Luss. Is there any further discussion?
Yes. Uh, the whole general guideline, like, just, just, uh, hard, hard to say, I don't know, number five. Sorry, next question, general guideline, number eight. How's that, is that different from what we had before, both sides of the fire or anything?
Before there wasn't, there wasn't a size on it. Um, you could have a.
Bomb.
Yeah, well, I know with the script, there was a bonfire representative, but no actual, no good definition declared, at what point do you reach a bonfire from a campfire? So we decided to clarify that pile size and then along with the pile size, you don't want twenty-seven little three-foot piles around the property that they can't keep under control. So we've looked at the number of, as well.
So after burning restricted, like, using all of this, um, restrictions in the general guidelines, open burning, open armed fighters, and use a lot of firefighters constantly intended. Is there a lot of interim burning going on? What do you mean? I mean, I, this specific is after burning, which one we all. Restricted, I don't look at it, it's eight oh two, I'm just trying to be clear, like, this is referencing. I mean, early on, this, uh, early, you mentioned, uh, fire, 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 there's a definition for fire pit? Yes. Resided in fire pit? I mean, that's not, is it mentioned in here somewhere?
We don't go one.
No, two more, I think.
And there's a definition, but I mean, is there a reference in here anywhere? To, uh.
Well, not sure there's any reference. So if, if it's in a, if it's in a receptacle, that's that, that'd be inside that, there were some, I think if I remember correctly, there was some specific reason here where it's different from, if you just have a pile on the ground.
Okay, so then given that, about eight oh two, oh five, or maybe six, six, yeah, it's, you know, fires are possible, three feet greater. I have more three feet greater, like, a lot of that. That's an outside fire that's not a bonfire, but it's just outdoor. I mean, I don't do a lot of burning unless it's in a fire space, so I'm not familiar with. Outdoor burning, I guess, as this is. So I'm just trying to understand, is that, um, three feet, little fires bigger than three feet, basically outside, right, because that.
Right. Well, I mean, you can have a container, that might be a five-foot round container, but it's still contained, so there's some safety precautions there in place that keeps it fire containment. Most of our calls for concern are cleaning up their, their properties with burning leads or things, things like that.
Right.
And that was not contained. So that's what allows that to now get into those surface fuels that can then venture off throughout or across properties. Generally in a contained, of course, we still want, you know, there's still things that can go wrong with a contained fire and a real fire pit. and a little fire pit. But we don't want that to be the part that say that maybe some restrictions that you can't just enjoy a nice little campfire out in the evening on a cool hunt.
So Denton County have a fire ban effect yet? Are you expecting it?
Uh, it's all Sherman did, um, I believe Cook County did it more, I'm not sure Denton County has a problem here. So they know still apply that whenever they do have that, then let's explain it all for here, too.
If you have further questions, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Number 18, update on road and sidewalk improvements. Stephen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, I don't really have anything to present here other than just talk about them. So we, um, we did meet, uh, this week with, uh, our engineers and to just a little bit of what was discussed earlier with, uh, Michael Coker about the, uh, retail side. We have an agreement with, we haven't got an agreement with them at this point, but we agreed with them that they would put in those two lanes once they got to a certain percentage. We presented an agreement, we presented a contract to them or a document for them to consider. They're more interested in trying, instead of trying to come up with a final price while closing, to try to just establish a number now. Uh, and so we're kind of working those numbers through to find out what really what the right number is. But that will pay for those lanes that Michael was talking about. And those lanes will come in when we do the construction, actually, on that, that section of the road. So we just started engineering on it. Uh, we did, they did the survey, so now they're, they're looking at that. We're gonna have to acquire a little bit of, uh, of, uh, uh, right of way, uh, right behind the church, moving back to the west, east, moving back to the east. There's like three tracks of land that we don't have any right of way that goes through that property on the corner. I'm talking about the corner street. But we're working on that, uh, the sidewalk, we talked about, uh, maybe leaving the sidewalk on the section between, in front of Bloomfield, will allow Bloomfield to do that sidewalk. We put in a sidewalk last year on Marthop and they're destroying it right now, so.
Why is it being destroyed?
They're running equipment over the top of it to get to their property and it's just, it's cracking and busting.
Stephen, I asked for this to be placed on the agenda primarily because constituent is concerned about the children that live in the west side of Naylor to get to Rodriguez because there's no school buses provided. So you got young children at Naylor and Marthop having to cross this intersection we have in town on foot or on bicycle to get to Rodriguez. Marthop has that sidewalk, which is nice, but we have nothing crossing that or anything on the west side of Naylor as a sidewalk either for children to get to school.
So that sidewalk is in a different phase of, of development.
And that's why we wanted to discuss.
Right.
And the mayor did a very good job of explaining that it's in the plan.
Right.
But we wanted to make sure the public knows it's in the plan because constituents are actually concerned about the safety of our children.
Right.
I am as well.
Right.
So that's why I asked it to be put on there so it can be publicly noted that sidewalks are being looked at to be placed.
And that sidewalk was partially funded by the Denton County bond program. But as we switched projects from moving to McCormont from Naylor, the Naylor project went to our phase two instead of our phase one. But there is a sidewalk, uh, proposed with that, that funding, or the funding of that project as well.
I think that's a point for our.
Sidewalk, sidewalk, they used the Brooklyn Road, that was, uh, can't use.
Right, if we were to do that now, then I think we'd lose the funding because they would only do that, as the mayor said, as a part of a road project, so. So we're kind of stuck with that one. Uh, the other section, but we do have the sidewalk on the north side of, of Marthop. It's that south side, the section that the school district wanted on the south side between 720 and Rodriguez, where the bulldozers and whatnot are going on that sidewalk, they're cracking it, they're tearing it. They'll have to replace and fix it, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to go in on McCormont and put that section for Bloomfield on the, on the south side. And then they turn around and do construction on the interior too. So we decided we leave that off, let them find that. Uh, we'll go ahead and plan for the sidewalk between Winchester and Naylor, not to get here. And then we're working as well on the pavement improvements with, uh, uh, Yacht Club Estates as well as, uh, Preston Hills. So we're working on that as well.
Thank you for your, thanks.
You bet.
So Stephen, is that Standard that's paying for the two lanes on the north side of?
Yes, that'd be Standard. And it'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of 200, 250,000 would be their contribution.
Contribute to the.
Right, and that would just be a cash contribution back to us. Uh, the streets in Mable Sound, those are construction repairs, so we found some sections that had, uh, that were failing. And so they're putting in what they're calling a geogrid system at the bottom of it. They'll dig out that base, they'll come back with a subgrade of rock. And they'll lay down this geogrid in there and then they'll put asphalt back on top of that.
It's been going on for two weeks, is there anything happening?
Uh, I just got some stuff the engineers sent back over, design on what they wanted to put back. I haven't heard back from the engineers this week.
I don't know what they took out, for example.
Right, well, they're gonna have to put that, they're gonna have to cut that base out, come back with a rock base, put that geogrid in and then put the asphalt back on top of it, so. It's not a big process, it's just getting them to do it.
Yeah.
Jack, you have a question?
I do. Quite a few council meetings ago, there was interesting discussion about hundreds of thousands of dollars in federal grant money that could be available for sidewalk and safety improvements within two miles of a school, if I remember that correctly. And there's never been any word about that since then. Have any applications been submitted or what is the procedure to tap into that?
I recall the specific sidewalks within a certain amount of feet from a school. Do you, Stephen?
Back in 2008, nine, 10, Philga had this Safe Routes to Schools grant, but it's been long.
This was much more recent than that. This was like within the last six months.
I think that might have been some conversation I heard at Parks, but I don't know where they got that information from. But Parks did mention something about some kind of sidewalk grant, but there's not one that I'm aware of.
Thank you for bringing that up, Jack. I need to look into it.
I mean, we'd love to have some money for it if it was available, no doubt.
So Stephen, I reported you a crack on the Lake Park Street that was recently repaid. Was that left out?
No, I'll get them back out and resill it. Because I want them to come back out. I thought probably best to let, get through this dry spell because drier it is, hotter it is, the more they're gonna crack. So let them expose as much as possible and then I'll seal them.
Any other questions for Stephen? Okay, the next item is future agenda items. Do you have anything that you want to let Joni know at this time? If not, you can always send her a new meeting. And it appears we do not, and the meeting is adjourned with no further business at 7:20 PM. Thank you.